The November 13th School Board meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Lala Burdi.
Here.
T. Felton.
Here.
Human.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
W. Felton.
Here.
Raj.
Here.
And Director Claflin's absent at six present.
Excellent. If we could rise for pledge allegiance. We have a scout in the audience. We should have him be running this for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I will first ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening, as well as the committee of the whole meeting minutes from October 23rd, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries. And we've got some business to do tonight. So first, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution for canvassing returns of votes of school district special election. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We are on our game. Everyone is eager to do things tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries.
Chair Raj, will you do a roll call for that?
Oh, thank you, Lisa. Will you please call the roll?
Resolution. Director Lala Burdi.
I'm, what, where are we?
It's a resolution.
Resolution, we just need to do a roll call instead of a.
Yes.
Thank you. T. Felton.
Yes.
Human.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
W. Felton.
Yes.
Chair Raj.
Yes.
At six ayes.
That the motion carries. We'll get things in order here tonight. Up next, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution authorizing assurance of certificates of election and directing the school board district clerk to perform other election-related duties. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, you need to call the roll again, Lisa. Thank you.
Director T. Felton.
Yes.
Human.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
W. Felton.
Yes.
Lala Burdi.
Yes.
Raj.
Yes.
At six ayes.
Without the motion carries. And up next, we did not coordinate this ahead of time, but we need to do oath of office for our newly elected board member, Kim Human. Round of applause. All right. We should probably rise for the oath and head to the center of things. Kim, you and I go up front. You're good.
I don't have to stand up? Okay.
I brought my coffee.
Oh, good. Okay. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota State Legislature. The power puts you and other members of the school board in a position of being morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education for every student in our district. In carrying out these responsibilities, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, advocacy, and providing vision the board with extensive participation of the community in visions, the community's educational future, and the formulation of goals defined outcomes that set the course of our public schools. To achieve this vision, the board, in partnership with district leadership, establishes a structure that creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to retain their maximum potential through sound organizational framework. Kim Human, having signed the acceptance of oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by raising your right hand and repeating the oath of office after me? I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of South St. Paul Public Schools, special school district number six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of South St. Paul Public Schools, special school district number six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations again. All right. We made jokes at our committee of the whole meeting earlier that our vice chair had sworn in Kim before, but didn't stick that long because we had to do another election. So now fully certified. Up tonight, we have our Quality in Action report, and I invite Chuck O'Chocky to up front.
Thank you. School board chair, school board members, Dr. Zambrino, the greater school community. My name is Chuck O'Chocky, and I'm the proud principal of South St. Paul High School. Thank you very much for this opportunity to come and talk to you about a very cool class we have at South St. Paul. And I realized that when I wrote "a" very cool class, we have many cool classes at South St. Paul, not just one. Thanks to the generous support of the community in approving both the operating levy questions that were on the ballot in the fall of 2022, South St. Paul High School, with the other schools in our district, we're excited to begin the pathway to the Packer Promise. One part of the pathway to the Packer Promise is to expand opportunities for our students, especially in career exploration. And a class like Introduction to the Trades is exactly that, career exploration. A 21st century skill is thinking outside the box. An Introduction to the Trades class is a phenomenal idea, but may become difficult when there's not a trades teacher to hire. Last year, we weren't able to offer the Introductions to the Trades course. Thinking outside the box and having a staff member willing to step up to the plate has allowed us to offer the Arts of the Trades course, a little different look to what the trades are all about. And I know all of you are like, enough, Mr. O'Chocky, can we get on to the important part? I see a teacher. I see some kids. Can we hear about them? So it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Graham Judd, our Arts of the Trade teacher. And I'm eternally grateful for Mr. Judd for allowing us to think outside the box when trying to offer our students the opportunities that, in something that we believe will be helpful and successful in their future. So, Mr. Judd, please come forward.
Hello. My name is Mr. Judd. I am a extremely, can I control clicking, or does someone else do?
Lisa's driving for you.
So we can move on to the exciting pictures first. So I'm super excited about the Art of the Trades. So it turns out that it's actually, it's very difficult to find a trades teacher that is licensed in the trades because the trades are so lucrative that it is hard to justify, even with amazing health insurance, for someone to switch from trades to education. Our students at South St. Paul are very motivated by being active. They want to be in control of their future. They want to know all the options out there. I graduated in 2003 down in Florida. College was the option. Like, that is what you did. That was all that was pushed. That was the only message we had in school was like, you will go to college. That's the only option for us to do. So I'm extremely passionate about this. That's my son back there. He's in scouts. I learned a lot of my hands-on equipment from scouting, using power tools, using a lot of equipment. Shop class had already been phased out of my school by the time I was able to take it in my junior and senior years. So I learned everything through scouting. So it's extremely exciting to get onboard with doing the trades, which is something I'm passionate about. I'm also dyslexic. And so giving this venue where kids who aren't maybe thriving in the, like, the general education, giving them an opportunity outside of PE to get hands-on, even more than we get hands-on in art class, doing manual labor, using power tools, feeling just the visceral quality of having wood in their hands and manipulating it and actually creating something. These are pictures of our first project. We are making cornhole tables just to practice measuring, practice hand tools. Our objective here, as it's a new program, is I wanted to have the students make something that they'd be able to present to the student body as a whole. And so the cornhole tables are going to be painted and lacquered and stenciled with South St. Paul on it with the goal of auctioning them off to parents and different athletic organizations, trying to bring some financial assistance back to the trades. We are going to be, we're just starting making model homes out of foam core to practice our measuring skills and our hands-on using the inches system, which is, or the imperial system. It has like two or three different names. All because the boat got delayed in the 17th century. But, and after this, we have, I've started taking orders from teachers to see what they need in their classrooms to see as students if we can, like, I could just assign a bunch of boring projects. We could go and make a stud wall. We could slap an outlet in there, and we can test it out and say, congratulations, you built a stud wall. Instead, I want the students to be helping out the school as a whole. If we're going to spend money on resources and we're going to chop up lumber and cut it up and not have to recycle it, I'd rather have us cut it up, have teachers be able to use it, make shelving for science classes that desperately need to hold massive three-ring binders, all that kind of stuff. So I'm just excited for the kids to be able to see their work in their classrooms that they've made and to give them kind of ownership, like, I am helping to better the school. But, yeah, no, it's very exciting. I haven't done this before, so I'm nervous.
How cool.
You did bring a guest, right?
I did bring a guest. Adam is here. It is very busy. I'm not, I'm not going to abandon him up here, but if Adam wants to come up, you guys probably want to ask him questions. I'll stay up here with him. Hopefully, I hope more people would show up, but it is a Monday night.
Excellent. What kind of things have you built so far? What's been exciting?
So far, we've just built our cornhole tables. I'm excited for our, like, next project.
Yeah.
But we did, we helped with the set for the Wizard of Oz.
Oh, that was great.
So if anyone saw the Wizard of Oz, you saw some of the.
Yes.
Nice.
It was excellent.
Great way to apply those skills. Excellent.
How does it feel when you're able to stand back and look at what you built?
Feels pretty good, like, knowing that you built that and has a practical use. Somebody can use it for something. It's not just like a drawing on a paper.
Right.
And what grade are you in?
Ten.
So have you at all looked ahead to, like, if there's a trade you would like to go into? Or is it still kind of exploring?
Still kind of exploring.
Excellent.
I see there's, there's power tools in that picture. I didn't think we had any power tools. You must have picked some up. Did you get to use some power tools? I'm talking saws and stuff, not the drill there, but.
So far, we've just used the drill. So far, just used the drills.
Just that? All right. You'll graduate up to that later. Did you guys get some DeWalt advertising money too? That was then almost perfectly set up, right, so you could see the name?
No, because me taking over the class was kind of right before the school started. I'm still going to run safety checks on all the equipment, and I have to go through, change blades, test all the saws, make sure that nothing is, because they've been out of use for a few years. So I just want to make sure that everything's good before we start using the fun stuff.
And how does it affect how you feel about going, coming to school, going to school? Having, being a part of this program?
Definitely one of, like, my more fun classes. Like, that and gym are like the two classes I look forward to the most at school.
Yeah.
Is this an everyday class, or is this like on a split schedule?
Every other day.
Okay.
Yeah, so I could see us growing it. Mr. Judd has done a fantastic job. We already have kids who are talking about, can I take this next year? And it actually fits really nicely with the tri-district program. We have the transportation in the trades. And then we actually have some kids who are at 917 D.C.A.L.S. this year, or DCTC, taking some trades classes too. So we're trying to build this pathway of, hey, you want to use your hands? You want to do the trades? This will be the pathway through South St. Paul. But I actually have kids asking, are we doing this next year? Mr. Judd never gives himself enough credit, but he is like the Pied Piper right now. Kids want to go to his class, and they want to do this. And I don't know if you guys know this, he's a really accomplished artist, too. Like, if you've ever, there are some books that you might see the covers of his work. Like, that's, but he was willing to say, yeah, let's try something different. This is really good for kids. And I want to do it. And our kids are being really successful, and our staff has backed it. When, when he sent out the link to say, hey, what would you like? Can we build something for your classroom to watch all of the requests come in? Knowing that they're going to be built by kids that are probably in that class, that, you know, is really cool. So it's, there's a lot of support for it.
It's pretty amazing. You're going to have, you're going to have a waiting list pretty quickly in terms of orders and requests.
Yeah. That's exciting.
Excellent.
If I may, I just, I feel like we're at a watershed moment here to, you know, we got the resources from the community last year, and now we get to dig in and figure out, you know, what is it that we're trying to create and do here? And we have amazing staff who are engaged in that, our students, our principals and other administration. And Amy Winter's been working with the task force to gather feedback on the direction we'd like to go. And it's fun to be in a small district where we can have these internal conversations move quickly and kind of feel like the sky's the limit.
And there's funding? You're, you're being funded?
I haven't been told no yet.
All right. Okay.
Oh, he is in the back room with a bunch of guys.
Again, I see, like, drill presses and maybe a table saw. Did we have this hide now or in the storeroom, or did we?
We did, actually. When they did the redesign, which I wasn't, I wasn't a part of, we held on to some of the machinery with the thought that our robotics team would actually have to use this stuff. So we didn't throw everything, we didn't get rid of everything. We held on to some things. And so we have the space to grow.
Yeah, we, there's a CNC machine, too. You can see in the back of this picture. There's a CNC machine. That would be fun to get up and running. I got to research the, I believe you have to pay yearly to use the programming for those. But that was when they were new, so I'm wondering if there's open source stuff. But there's just so many things that I'd still like to just have the time to dig into. And multiple bandsaw, circular saws. I'd say the only piece of equipment that's not in the studio right now is a table saw. But just outside of a table saw, there's miters, there's everything you would need to, you know, make all sorts of different and interesting things.
That's awesome. Thanks for updating us on this. I didn't know that much about it. So, and, and please come back and tell us how it's going.
Absolutely.
Looking forward to bidding on one of your cornhole sets.
Please do, yeah. The only other notable thing that I forgot to mention is we are going to be with Ms. Tatiana's classes. We're going to be going on a field trip to Constructing Our Future in St. Paul. And so the cornhole funding will hopefully probably reimburse some of the travel funding for that. So, yeah, so we'll be taking a group of students to the Constructing Our Trades where they have professionals from every major trade union and organization with hands-on applications of like cement, like, how to smooth cement, like, what's it like pouring cement? The pipe layers, Pipe Fudders Union, like, electricians, everybody's there, all with hands-on demos for the kids to touch stuff, play with it. So it should be a blast.
Oh, cool.
But I can't take any of the credit for that. That's all. I'm Ms. Walker.
Oh, but there's so many incredible and lucrative pathways into some careers as well that sometimes we don't emphasize. So it's really great to get some exposure to.
The electricians at my house always seem very happy.
It's all right. I enjoy writing the check to a former student for the plumbing.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Adam.
Well, tonight for Quality in Action, we also get a double feature. So in honor of Native American Heritage Month, Leslie Gómez, Assistant Director of Educational Services, Courtney Renville Soto, Native American Liaison, will also highlight some work in our American Indian program. We got a little preview during our committee of the whole meeting, and now out to the public. Welcome.
Good evening. Hi. Chair Raj, members of the board, and Dr. Zambrino. I'm, I mean, I think Chair Raj already took away all my talking points. I'm Leslie Gómez, Assistant Director of Educational Services, and I am pleased to introduce our new American Indian Cultural Liaison who'll highlight some of, some of the work she's started on this year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Courtney.
Hello, everyone. My name is Courtney Renville Soto. I am the new Native American Cultural Liaison for South St. Paul Public Schools. I am Dakota from Sisitunowaw, Sisitun, Sisitun, sorry, Sisitunwaptenoyete. I have five years working in education and community engagement. I have a passion for cultural advocacy and a commitment to empowering Native American students. I'm super excited to be here and excited to work with the district. This is our American Indian Resource Center. We have a classroom at the secondary building. We were able to put up all of the artifacts and represent the 11 tribal nations in Minnesota. It's really a beautiful classroom. So this year, so far, we have gotten the classroom all set up. We've met with American Indian education students. We have distributed backpacks and school supplies to our American Indian students. We have been able to get a subscription of Rosetta Stone for, to learn Ojibwe. I was able to obtain 80 copies of Dakota stories and storytellers from SMSC. Super great material to use for our students. I have made cultural trunks for our teachers and our staff to be able to check out to use with all of the students with the, in the district. I have provided PD for our staff. I've met with tribal nations, T-Nec, tribal nations, and we have had our A-PAC meetings, and we are working on building a roster. Moving forward this year, we will continue to meet with our American Indian education students. I'm hoping to have more language classes for our students. We're still working on growing our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. It's always good to add more parents on there. I'm hoping to have a powwow for our district and community in May. We, I'm looking into having Native American authors and presenters do assemblies or speakers. I want to obtain more educational material to share with our teachers and staff. And we're working on building partnerships with our classroom teachers. Padamia, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm just so excited for you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm so excited to be here. I think it's important work. And it's, it can only, it can only benefit our students in our district.
Yeah, we're really lucky to have Courtney. She's, she jumped right in. We have a lot of things that, that we hadn't been addressing in the past in our program. We hadn't been serving elementary students. And so she's been meeting with elementary students, with secondary students, setting up the classroom, coordinating with community partners, and getting the room set up, and it's been really exciting. I'd share that she, she shared with me, so this is Courtney's story, but I don't know if she'll share it. At one of her first meetings with the, with elementary students, one of the students said to her that it was the best day they'd ever had in school. So it's really, really exciting for American Indian students to see their culture reflected, to hold space for them to learn more about their culture and share about themselves. And so I'm, I think we're very lucky to have her on the team, and she's, she's been doing great work.
Yeah, the meeting, especially with the elementary students, they're so sweet. And, yeah, best day ever. Didn't want to go back to class. I'm looking forward to having one.
Yeah, thank you. We, one of the discussions we had in our committee meeting, but so excited for this work and also looking to engage our community in this process as well. And I think that's so critically important to, you know, where we are and kind of building those authentic relationships, I think, is going to be really important. So really appreciate the work that you're doing.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, with all the exciting stuff out of the way, now we'll move on to our reports section of the meeting. We did not have anyone here for our public listening session. Public listening sessions always happen prior to the first meeting of the month, right here at 4:15. Anyone is welcome. And can also submit public listening submissions via our website at any time. And I will turn it over to Vice Chair Monica Weber for highlights from our committee of the whole.
Thank you very much. So most of the things we talked about in committee of the whole are on the agenda. So we just got a preview. We heard the similar reports to the Native American Liaison, went through a few bit more of the nitty-gritty of the numbers of how many students and the services provided. And then we had a full review of the audits, which we are going to be taking up later in the meeting. And then we also got an enrollment update as there are certain milestones the district has to meet in order to prove their enrollment because majority of our enrollment is tied to student numbers. And so we are keeping a very close eye on a month-by-month basis of how many students we have coming into and are leaving the district.
Important work that we keep our eye on. Next, I will turn it over to Dr. Zambrino for some highlights from around the district.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Raj. I mean, before I jump into the slide deck, we did just finish our first quarter of the year, which is always crazy to me how fast a school year goes. And for those of us who've been doing this a while, they just get faster and faster the longer you do it. But just a fantastic start to the year. I mean, we saw here, you know, some new, some benefits we're getting with some new staffing and new programming. We've been adding courses at, you know, we're new curriculum at the elementary, classes at the secondary. Had a fantastic professional development day recently. So just want to start by just saying what a great start it's been for the school year. I'm excited. As I said, I think we're at a watershed moment where we're not going to slow down. We're just going to keep getting better and better as we go. So lots of great things to be proud of as we end that first quarter. We're all proud of Kim for winning her election. So again, congratulations. Also, we did have four candidates, so always want to make sure to acknowledge the others and thank them for their interest in serving on our board. I think a lot of times people don't realize how much work you all do as board members. So we're excited to have Kim continue with us, but want to thank the others. And the timing is a little different and unique, which is why we had to start the, the meeting with the swearing in. So typically, as a board member comes on, it's a four-year term. At this point in the, taking over for Director Bierman, Kim will have three years. She'll serve until January of '27. So excited to have you. Also this time here, although I was kind of driving over here and it was gorgeous outside, so I feel weird having to do this. But we do want everyone to be mindful of just paying attention for emergency closing. And so just as a reminder, we, we have a number of systems we use. First and foremost, we'll kick it out through Parents Square and our website, social media, and of course, on TV and media there. So one thing we want to make sure that parents do, families do, guardians, make sure your contact information is accurate and campus so that if we do need to make that call, you, you get that information, the phone call, the email that we'll, we'll be kicking out. We always try to do it as soon as possible. Ideally, if we knew weather was coming, we would call that ahead of time the night before. As a new superintendent, last year, I think I went to sleep about 15 times where the forecast was somewhere between one to eight inches overnight. And so we were really not able to make that call as early as we'd like to. So we appreciate your patience as we sort through that. But when we do need to do an emergency closing, closure, we will have the flexible learning kick in. So the schools and teachers have lots of information they can share with families, but you can also learn more in our, on our newsroom, on our website. Another thing we always try to highlight when we're here at the board, we talk a lot about our work and the pre-K through 12 portion of our work, but we do a lot of things to support the entire community. And so Fair for All is, is an example of that. So we are able to help offer high-quality, low-cost grocery store at Central Square. Comes in once a month, and like this month, you can see there's a holiday pack featuring traditional holiday foods for $35. And so to be able to get a whole meal situation, but always fresh fruits and vegetables. The next one coming up will be on the 21st from 4:00 to 6:00 at Central Square. Also at Central Square, we do a lot of programming. Again, not in our typical K-12, but we have our senior center there. And the November Social is coming up on Thursday from 11:30 to 1:00, and it's in the spirit of the season, turkey and gravy being served. So please come on by. You don't have to be a member of the senior center to join. It is open to all residents 55-plus, but it is probably the best. It is open to all residents 55-plus, but it is probably the best deal around. It is not at a big expense to join our senior center and stay plugged in. I've shared in the past trips and other great things that they do through there, so always trying to work to, to make our community better. And then some highlights from things going on. We heard about the set design from our presenter earlier in Quality in Action, but we did have our production of the fall musical Wizard of Oz with students in grades six through 12, and they crammed in four performances with two matinees and two evenings last weekend. So as always, a highlight of the schooling experience to see our theater productions, and lots of great engagement from our students and staff throughout the years. Always, we had a Day of the Dead celebration that was organized by our cultural liaisons and supported by our CDLU students. They, students made ofrendas or offerings, they served traditional foods, there was music, entertainment, face painting. And while we do these themed events, they are of course open to everybody, and we encourage everybody to attend any of our cultural celebrations. Another great highlight just started really last year and continuing is just the high level of engagement. We're seeing people really want to be in the schools and be with their kids. Principal Breetoey and I were talking about the numbers. She showed me a video of a line just out the door for people coming in. So November's Family Literacy Month, and they hosted a Books and Breakfast where families were invited to come in, have breakfast, and read books. And I mean, it was hundreds in attendance and standing room only, so they had books that they could read and decorate bookmarks. And again, just fantastic to see the level of engagement our families have and how they want to be part of their child's education in the school. So thank you to everybody who came. Also got to see the Minnesota Symphony Orchestra at Lincoln Center, so they came and visited. They, it's really cool, they go classroom to classroom and feature pieces, and then they had two performances in the gym, so I was able to see one of those performances. What I really appreciated was they were talking about the composers, and they featured a really diverse set of composers, so with a Latino background or African background, so that even though you don't necessarily know that when you're hearing the music, that they called that out. And the theme this year was music tells a story and how stories influence music, so you can imagine how important that cultural connection is with the music. And then we've got a lot of dates, remember, I won't read them all, but some important ones coming up here. We are off for, of course, the Thanksgiving break next week. We don't have school the Wednesday before, so just a reminder not to send the kiddos on Wednesday. December 1st, we have a professional learning day, and then we have winter break right around the corner. For our elementaries, we have Family Fall Festival and some fundraisers going on, so check those out, and please be out there to support the schools. Secondary, lots of performances going on. We just talked about the concert, I mean, the play, and now we've got the musical, now we've got band concert, choir concert, and lots of activities coming online with sports. So I said it last time we were here, it's hard to believe the winter sports are firing up, especially when the sun is shining and the sun still feels warm, but we are flying through. I do want to make sure to say, wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving if you're traveling. Safe travels. As I said, our teachers, our staff, our building offices, and our other support staff, everybody's worked so hard, and it's nice to get to that break to just pause and give thanks, and I just want to make sure I share my great appreciation for the amazing work our staff are doing every day.
Excellent.
As always, our material's online, so plug in and use social media, however you like to stay engaged.
Perfect. Lots going on in this month, so.
Yeah.
All right. Up next, we have our consent agenda, which are financial claims, staffing, and personnel in nature. They are presented in our board packet and frequently discussed at our Committee of the Whole meeting. I am looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries. And buckle up, we have so many policies that are under revision this year, many in response to some of our state legislature changes. Some of them are coming to us as recommendations from MSBA, and also just sort of an evolution of practices inside of the district. We, all policies are under review for three readings at the board meeting, at board meetings. They are publicly available on our board packet, but we have policies under review for equal education opportunity policy, school district administration, superintendent, superintendent selection, superintendent contract duties and evaluation, policy implementation, administrator code of ethics, drug-free workplace and drug-free school, tobacco-free environment, protection and privacy of pupil records, school district curriculum and instructional goals, organization of school calendar and school day, and school district accountability system, all under review right now. Those will remain under review for the next two meetings before being voted upon by the And if we get to our business items, I am looking for a motion to approve, approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the June 30th, 2023 financial statements and management report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And for discussion, I'm going to turn this over to Brady Hoffman and Aaron Nielsen to present this.
Good evening. So we're at the point where our auditor here will be presenting our annual financial report, so they've completed their audit, and he'll give a quick overview, and then turn it back over to the board for any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. As mentioned, my name is Aaron Nielsen, I'm with MMKR CPAs, so independent CPA firm of the district. Tonight, we were able to present to the committee beforehand and appreciate that opportunity to do that. There are two reports that we issued this year for the financial statement of the district, as well as our management report. That financial statement has now surpassed 100 pages of financial information and opinions, reports that are included in there. So I do sincerely appreciate the opportunity to talk to the committee beforehand, and I'm sure the public is happy to not have to go through all of that in this presentation. But that being said, we did want to make a public comment with my presentation here, just a couple of comments, that we have completed that process for the financial statement audit. The separate single audit has been completed. We have issued what is known as a non-modified or clean opinion on your financial statement audit, meaning that that financial statement document is fairly presented as of June 30th, 2023, and for the year then ended. So that is the most recent financial period completed, and we have completed our work with regard to that audit. We did talk about a couple of the comments that we had issued this past year. We had one internal control comment on the financial statement that we discussed, and then one internal control and compliance comment for that federal single audit that we discussed. And then the last comment I did want to share with the public is with regard to your general fund, that primary operating fund of the district. We did cover all of the operations by specifically wanting to mention the general fund. Again, the district has continued to meet your minimum fund balance policy after receiving the results of this year's activity and completing the year. So with that, I just wanted to make those public comments for you, and if there's any questions or comments, I would be happy to try to answer any questions.
Well, we're a little hesitant to share, as like much of this was discussed prior. I mean, some things that really stood out as we sort of go through, the control findings is something we have seen before, and some of that has to do with the size of our district that's just a little bit harder to manage. Also highlighted some items around kind of coding of students, and so that we are capturing all the revenue that we can. But I think one of the things that the board is very attentive and very aware of, both now and what we're planning for, is we are in a community that is a declining state of enrollment, and that is certainly a major focus of a lot of the efforts and concentration and planning that we need to kind of account for, so. Excellent.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have to vote, so all in favor of accepting the financial statements and management report, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Some lengthy, lengthy readings for, with us to be able to kind of go through in that as well. Up next, I am looking for a motion to, for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the acceptance of GIFS resolution.
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I turn that over to Brady Hoffman.
Good evening. So this evening, there are several donations included within the board packet, ranging from donations for the senior all-night party to random acts of kindness. We have some donations for some uniforms and some additional coach salaries as well. So we're very grateful for the, these organizations and the community for their continued support of all we have going on here at South St. Paul Public Schools.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Lisa, what do you call the roll?
Director Hume?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Lala Burdi?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
And Chair Roche?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
That the motion passes, and thank you so much for the ongoing support for our students and our schools inside of our community. Next, I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2023-24 Student/Teacher Agreement between South St. Paul Public Schools, Specialist School District Number Six, and Hamlin University.
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, invite Joel Meltier, but this is an agreement similar to that that we are doing with many of our local universities.
Absolutely. So before you is just another agreement that we have with Hamlin University for this school year, for student/teachers to come in and work with in our classrooms with our teachers. Again, as mentioned before, this is a great opportunity for us to create a pipeline of teachers into the district, so we encourage the board to approve this agreement, just as it did the past one, so that we can start that process with Hamlin.
And sell those student/teachers on how great our district is as well.
Exactly.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Now, thank you very much. Now, tonight, we had so much to go over during our Committee of the Whole meeting that we did not get to some of our committee reports, so we will be doing that at this time for board members to sort of report on what their committees have been up to in the last, I guess, three weeks now. So I will start all the way down with Kim Hume.
Community education was scheduled to meet tomorrow. However, there is a conflict with several of the directors and board members, and we will not be meeting until January 9th. So gives me time to dig into policy.
That it does, as you are jumping on a brand-new committee after your swearing in. Wendy Felton?
A couple of fun things that are going to be happening. Lincoln Center, their fundraiser, will be held tomorrow evening at Raising Canes in West St. Paul on Robert Street from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. You can attend dinner there, just let them know that you are supporting Lincoln Center School. And also, our Capoja Education Center, their Fall Festival, which will be happening on Thursday, November 30th, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. They will be having games, playing bingo, there'll be a photo booth, and they are doing this festival to support their Educational Foundation Scholarship, which they give to a graduating senior next spring in May. So we look forward to our families supporting the scholarship funding that will be happening for a student from Capoja that will be graduating in our district next year. And also, I, I attended the theater, the Wizard of Oz, this past weekend. It was wonderful, absolutely phenomenal, I loved it. A huge thank you to, to Mr. Holson for the great job that the students did, that the tech people did, they did a great job. Just thank them so much for a wonderful production. And also, coming up this week on Thursday, it's the Education Foundation Gala, which will be held at Southview Country Club, and it will be, it is, it is a fun event, I've attended it many, many times. There are live auctions, silent auctions, and also, one thing that you can do if you're interested, if you want to attend any of the events, they have several raffles events. The raffle tickets are $10 each. If anyone is interested in purchasing a raffle ticket, you can certainly contact me or certainly visit the Education Foundation on Marie Avenue, because the drawing will be held there on Thursday evening for the winner. And then coming up also at the end of this month, actually, two weeks from tomorrow, because I, I attend Intermediate 917 as our board representative there, I will be attending the National AESA Conference, which goes from November 28th to December 1st, which is being held in Anaheim, California, close to Disneyland. So looking forward to this conference, which I have attended three times in the past. It's a very educational thing regarding special education agencies that are available for support, help, and information, so looking forward to that coming up. Thank you.
Tim Felton?
Yeah, we, we did have a South St. Paul Open Foundation meeting. It was extremely brief. We didn't really talk about much, other than there was a new request coming through for the, the boys hockey team and the new coach, Zach Palmquist, so that promises to be exciting and a whole new coaching staff, so looking forward to that. That was it.
Excellent. And Monica Weber?
So the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, AMSD, did have a meeting about three weeks ago, talked about, again, general events that are going on in the schools. And I know that in the next meeting, they're going to be talking about some of the levy discussions and different things, different school districts will be dealing with. Would like to express my congratulations to all the school districts that were able to successfully pass their levies this past week in the election, and my, of course, condolences to those districts who will have more interesting budget discussions now that unfortunately their levies did not pass. And once again, thank you so much to all the people in South St. Paul for last year, for their support for our levies, and we've already seen in these meetings, whether it's new classes, or our peer coaches, or our fifth-grade band, all the wonderful programs that we are able to do, because last year, the voters voted yes for our referendum.
Excellent. Nikki Lala Burdi?
The Community Engagement Committee has not met. We definitely need to get a meeting on the calendar, and that's all I have for tonight.
And Policy Committee, the sort of product of their work, was presented tonight for the first of those three readings. As we kind of go through, tonight, we are also moving into a closed session per open meeting law, Minnesota Statute 13D dot 03 for teacher negotiation updates. Do I have a motion to move into a closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? With that, we will be moving into a closed session. Thank you, everyone.
It's in favor.
All in, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.